To order, please rise for an invocation by Reverend Jason Jordan, Westside Church of God, and in their main standing for the pledge of allegiance to be led by Aiden Fadel, Troop 4166.
Would you bow your heads with a prayer with me? Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight, and God, we recognize that you are God and that we are not. And God, first off, I pray for every person that sits on this council, that you would give them wisdom and grant them insight far beyond their means, and that, God, that they would make decisions based upon convictions and not out of convenience. God, tonight, we pray for the police officers, all of the first responders. And God, what we pray is that in a nation of chaos and in a time of darkness, that Poplar Bluff would be a city that shines forth, and it would be a city that's held together in unity. So, God, we pray all of these things in the wonderful and in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Real call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman McDay.
Here.
Councilwoman Horton.
Here.
Councilman Tinsley.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilwoman Fox.
Here.
Mayor Protem Crocker.
Here.
Mary DeGerris.
Here.
We do have a forum.
Thank you. Disclosure of interest, any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at previous meeting. Seeing none, citizens input, each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Yes, we'll need your name and address, please.
Okay. Gina Kegel, Harville, Missouri. Do you need the full address? Full address?
Yes.
Okay. 405 County Road, 343 Harville, Missouri. Well, first, I want to thank you for letting me come up here and talk with you. I am speaking tonight on behalf of the Poplar Bluff Bully Alliance. It's a newly formed group of concerned citizens wishing to address the breed discriminatory legislation in Poplar Bluff. We understand there is a concern for safety for all of our citizens here, but we as animal lovers, we want to save the animals. We view the breed discrimination with a very specific perspective. We understand that not everyone shares this viewpoint, especially not a lot of the government officials. We understand that heartwarming stories are plentiful. I have plenty of my own, but these testimonials have little sway. So, in the next few minutes, I would actually like to address recent research and stats that indicate that this type of legislation is not cost-effective and it discriminates against law-abiding citizens like myself. In a sense, this means that there's a more cost-effective avenue than one, and one that supports the rights of the law-abiding citizens of Poplar Bluff and other communities, one that focuses on the real issue of irresponsible dog ownership. And a few years ago, the city of Poplar Bluff defined an ordinance addressing dangerous animals. It seemed to address the parts of the issue of responsible dog owners. Sadly, it also addressed the pit bull terriers that we have in this area and any breed that was determined to be a pit bull terrier mix. These wonderful dogs were at that time banned from the city of Poplar Bluff based on myths and stereotypes. It seemed that the city itself was jumping on that bandwagon, saying that these dogs were horrible beings and we should do away with all of them. With that said, the first thing I want to do is address a few myths. One, pit bull terriers are inherently vicious. That is false. That is not true. In fact, in the 2006 stats from American Temperament Test Association, eighty-four point one percent of the American pit bull terriers passed the temperament test. If you're not familiar with the temperament test, it is a temperament test that we test dogs for suitability for adoption purposes in many rescues. This is actually higher, the pass rate was higher than what golden retrievers earned at eighty-three point eight percent and border collies received at seventy-nine point six percent, along with the beagle at seventy-nine point six percent. In the city of Poplar Bluff, including up to May of this year, only twenty-one point one percent of the dog bites reported were from pit bull terriers and pit bull terrier mixes. What influences aggression in any dog are not the inherent traits of the breed, but the environmental influences. Some of these things include inbreeding, which is controlled by humans, being caged or on short or heavy chain for long periods of time with little to no socialization, abuse, being beat, being fed gunpowder. I had one dog who was being held at the local car wash, being sprayed with a high water pressure gun. Any of these things, those are environmental cues. Those are not biological factors. So, lack of proper training. Number two, pit bull terriers have bite pressure, have more bite pressure per square inch than any other breed. I was talking to a city official not long ago who said they had the worst bite ever. This is false. This is absolutely false. Tests have been done comparing the bite pressure. Several breeds show that the PSI, the pressure per square inch, is considerably lower than some of the estimates that have been made. Testing has shown that the domestic dog averages about three hundred twenty pounds of PSI. Dr. Brady Barr of the National Geographic conducted a comparative test between a pit bull terrier, rottweiler, and a German shepherd. The pit bull actually was the lowest of those three. He recorded the pit bull terrier at two hundred and thirty-five PSI, the German shepherd dog at two hundred and thirty-eight, and the rottie was at three hundred and twenty-eight PSI, considerably higher. Pit bull terriers attack more people than any other breed? That is false. That's the third stereotype. Bite stats are difficult to obtain. Dogs that are often referred to as pit bulls in statistical reports actually are a variety of breeds and mixes, and they're all lumped together as one. Many people have a difficult time identifying a true pit bull terrier, so the stats on this is often misrepresented. According to another veterinarian, Dr. Victoria Voith, visual identification even by professionals, and we consider our veterinarians professionals or animal control folks professionals, is often wrong. She found that in eighty-seven point five percent of the adopted dogs, breeds identified by DNA analysis were not the breeds stated by adoption agencies. Animal shelter workers were right in guessing the heritage of mixed breed dog only, or actually less than thirteen percent of the time. So, where are all these pit bulls coming from? Considering these factors, the actual number of attacks attributable to American pit bull terriers is considerably lower than represented. Also important to understand is the extreme popularity of the pit bull terrier and these types, these mixes. By some estimates, the numbers wise, that they are one of the most popular dog breeds, and that's been shown as well, that they are actually in the top twelve of the most popular dog breeds. Viewing stats from the Center of Disease Control, we can see that the trends in dog breed popularity reflect the number of bites attributed to the specific breed at the specific time. If some of you remember, German shepherd dogs were the bad dogs before, rottweilers were the bad dogs before, and Doberman Pinscher. So, they all run the gamut. The last stat, or the stereotype I have, pit bull terriers turn on their owners? That is false. Okay? That is false if they are in a good home. Dogs as a species do not perform behaviors just because. Okay? That is not something they do. The reason they return would be improper handling, lack of socialization and training, misreading of behavior by owner, and sometimes disease, rarely disease. Aggression, when it presents in pet dogs, follows a pattern. First, you have a warning sign, then you have more warning signs, and then, when those signs are continually ignored, when they are misinterpreted, the dog is going to use his teeth. When the owner is startled by that sudden and aggressive outburst, they're just totally unaware of what is happening. This is true for all dogs, whether it's a chihuahua, a pomeranian, the beagle, or a pit bull terrier. No dog turns on his owner. So, those are only a few myths of this breed discriminatory legislation. As we continue discussion of this breed discriminatory legislation for the city of Poplar Bluff, let's look at how we could actually consider the property rights. The breed discrimination restricts ownership of certain breeds, and it does violate citizens' rights. Breed discriminatory laws infringe on property rights. All Americans who follow safety rules should be allowed to own whatever breed of dog they choose. It's really that simple. And a 2014 national survey revealed that eighty-four percent of the Americans believe the government should not tell them what kind of dog breed they should own. This was a Luntz Global Omnibus poll. In addition, this breed discriminatory legislation wastes valuable tax dollars, and we are all concerned about tax dollars, fails to protect people from dog bites. It can result in the deaths of thousands of wonderful family dogs who have never bothered anyone. Families can file lawsuits. I think Poplar Bluff has been lucky that that hasn't happened, as far as I know. Families can file these lawsuits challenging the constitutionality of the ordinances, but that can be expensive. So, we're hoping to avoid this issue by addressing this ordinance. Breed discriminatory legislation is not only hurts responsible pet owners by placing their pets at risk of being seized and killed, it forces taxpayers to pay for this arbitrary and ineffective practice. Local governments that enact this type of provision could see the already underfunded animal control costs increase significantly. Misguided breed discriminatory laws restricting breeds or types of dogs could cause the citizens of Poplar Bluff roughly around twenty-seven thousand dollars a year, and it accomplishes little. I can break this down, animal control enforcement, roughly fifteen thousand six hundred, kenneling veterinary care, forty-seven hundred, cost of additional litigation necessary to prove the heritage, the DNA testing, roughly twenty-four hundred, DNA testing itself, thirty-five hundred, and this is actually based on analysis by John Dunham and Associates for Best Friends Animal Society. So, those are estimates. Breed discriminatory legislation fails to enhance public safety because studies show that it does not reduce the number of dog bites. Studies done in countries with breed discriminatory laws, including the United Kingdom, Spain, and Germany, found that they did not reduce the number of dog bites. That's why the American Bar Association, the National Animal Control Association, and the American Veterinary Medical Association do not support this breed discrimination. They support laws instead that go after the real problem, the behavior of the individual dog and the behavior of the reckless owner. The focus of dangerous dog laws should be on the behavior of the dog and the dog's owner, not the breed. Every dog is an individual and should be judged on behavior, not appearance. It's about advocating for comprehensive breed neutral laws that target truly dangerous laws and reckless owners. Breed neutral laws are effective because they target the behavior of the individual animal. Laws that prohibit reckless and negligent pet owners from owning dogs get to the root of the problem, the behavior of the owner. We hope that the Poplar Bluff City Council will be willing to work with the citizens of this area on formulating a more appropriate and comprehending breed neutral law that addresses the real issue of irresponsible pet ownership. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Nicole White. I live at 1520 Wallace here in Poplar Bluff. First, I'd like to say thank you to the members of the City Council and the mayor for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Nicole White, and I am a resident of Poplar Bluff, Missouri. I'm here tonight in hopes that we will, as respectable and caring people, work together to change our breed discriminatory legislation in ways that help our animal ordinances become fair to the residing citizens, as well as ensure that public safety does indeed take top priority over unfair breed-specific bans, such as our city's ban on pit bull terriers. I ask that you please open your minds and open your hearts and really listen to the information I'm going to share with you. I'm not here to tell you that you're wrong, nor am I here to offend anyone or give you the impression that we're out to get anyone. I'm simply here as a concerned citizen and a loving mother that wants to help make things right for these dogs and for the people of Poplar Bluff. A major issue we are faced with when dealing with breed discriminatory legislation is determining whether or not a dog is indeed a pit bull terrier. This issue is one that causes a large amount of question for anyone that has taken the time to research and educate themselves when it comes to breeds of dogs. Animal control officers believe that they can identify a pit bull terrier or a pit bull terrier mixed dog on sight. Studies done by the NACA or the National Animal Care and Control Association, as well as the National Canine Research Council, have proven this notion to be untrue. They have proven that a dog's breed cannot be identified visually and even by the best trained professionals, that ninety percent of shelter dogs in the United States that are identified as a particular breed are mislabeled. The only way to know for sure, according to these organizations, is to have the dog in question properly tested. They also state that these tests can become quite costly and often do not fit into local budgets, therefore, they are not utilized. This means that the breed of any dog that has been involved in an attack is unknown unless the dog has been tested, and according to the National Canine Research Council, because of that, our dog statistics are off a great deal when it comes to recording the breed of dog that did the biting. Dr. Voith is a professor at Western University and specializes in animal behavior. She conducted a study along with the NCRC in which more than five thousand, five thousand of our country's animal control officers and veterinary professionals took a survey to see if they could adequately identify breeds of dogs. There were a hundred dogs that were viewed for identification, all of which contained at least twenty-five percent of a single breed. No one professional was right more than the others. They were correct in identifying breeds of dogs less than one-third of the time. They pointed out to the American Veterinary Medical Association in 2009 what they thought bears repeat. The discrepancy between breed identifications based on opinion and DNA analysis, as well as concerns about reliability of data collected based on media reports, draws into question the validity and enforcement of public and private policies pertaining to dog breeds. Poplar Bluff banned pit bull terriers in 2010 because officials feel that they are dangerous animals and threaten public safety. Some say that these dogs are born aggressive. In other words, they feel that the aggression is in their genetic makeup. I will say that I credit the media for giving people this impression of these dogs that were, according to the ASPCA, once called America's nanny dog. These accusations and that these dogs have natural born aggression have been proven to be untrue by the NCRC, and contrary to what you may have heard or seen in the media, the UKC has stated time and time again that pit bull terriers have always been noted for their love of children, but ironically, aren't the best choice for guard dogs since they are extremely friendly even with strangers. One thing you won't hear from the media while they are portraying these loving animals as monsters is that they are, according to the American Veterinary Medicine Association, the most frequently abused, tortured, abandoned, and euthanized breed of dog in the United States. The ATTS scores pit bulls higher than many other breeds, whether large or small. The test stimulates a casual walk through a park or neighborhood where everyday situations are encountered. During this walk, the dog experiences visual, auditory, and tactile stimuli. Neutral, friendly, and threatening situations are encountered, calling into play the dog's ability to distinguish between non-threatening situations and those calling for watchful and protective reactions. Eight hundred and seventy pit bull terriers were tested, and of those, seven hundred and fifty-five passed the test. When talking about dog bites, we must stick to the facts. The Journal of American Veterinary Medical Association published the most comprehensive multifactorial study of dog bite-related fatalities to be completed since the subject was first studied in the 1970s. Covering all incidents that occurred during a ten-year period, it is based on investigative techniques and data not previously employed in dog bite studies. The study reliably identifies seven factors potentially within the control of dog owners that occurred in various combinations, in the overwhelming majority of dog bite-related fatalities. The factors identified were absence of an able-bodied person to intervene, incidental or no familiar relationship of victims with dogs, owner failure to neuter dogs, compromised ability of victims to interact appropriately with the dogs, dogs kept isolated from regular positive human interaction, owner's prior mismanagement of dogs, owner's history in abuse and neglect of dogs. Four or more of the factors I just identified co-occurred in eighty point five percent of the incidents during the ten-year period studied. This rate of co-occurrence has remained consistent through the latest year analyzed with an overall rate of seventy-nine point one percent. All of these factors were under the owner's control, and thus, potentially, they were preventable. Breed was not among the factors identified. This new study and its methodology offer an excellent opportunity for anyone concerned with the prevention of dog bite-related injuries to develop a better understanding of the multifactorial nature of these incidents. I truly believe that the breed discriminatory legislation, in this case, our city's ban, was an attempt to improve public safety, but studies done by the NCRC and the American Veterinary Medical Association show that it does not accomplish that goal. These studies have proven that breed bans do not ensure that the breed of dog will phase out. It actually does, what it actually does is it promotes even more irresponsible pet ownership and animal neglect. I am unaware of how many of you reside in city limits, but there are just as many pit bull terriers in Poplar Bluff now as there were before the ban was enacted. The difference now is that these dogs are being hidden from authorities due to fear that they will be seized and their owners find. They're not being properly socialized with society or other dogs, and this makes the possibility for dog-related incidents to happen. It also ensures that the dogs suffer from neglect, malnutrition, and malnutrition, which can also make the dog become more aggressive, and in that case, more probable to bite. Preventing these incidents is what's important to me, and I hope it's what's important to you all as well. Authorities have always agreed on causes and solutions, and the most effective solution, according to the American Veterinary Medical Association, is generic, non-breed-specific dangerous dog laws that place primary responsibility for a dog's behavior on its owner, in particular, targeting chronically irresponsible dog owners. It starts with us, the people. Dogs, just like babies, are not born to be violent, aggressive, or troublesome. It is up to us to raise our children to become productive citizens, and it is also up to us to raise our dogs to be well-mannered animals. Yes, dogs, all dogs, have the ability to bite a human, but according to Karen DeLeese and Donald Cleary of the National Canine Research Council, there is no individual characteristic or combination of characteristics that reliably explain which dogs will bite. Any dog can bite. There are at least two parties involved in a dog bite, a dog, one or more humans, and that includes the dog's owner. The dog's owner knows what's going on with their dog. They need to keep track of their dog and know their dog's behavior. Dog behavior cannot be understood apart from humans or the situations in which humans have placed dogs. National animal organizations such as the American Veterinary Medical Association, Humane Society of the United States, Animal Legal Defense Fund, Best Friends Animal Society out of Salt Lake, American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, the American Kennel Club, and the National Animal Control Association, all oppose breed bans. Stefan Otto, Director of Legislative Affairs for the Animal Legal Defense, sums up the agreed-upon view from these organizations when you're talking about breed bans. He says, "If the goal is dog bite prevention, then dogs should be treated as individuals under effective dangerous dog laws and not as part of a breed painted with certain traits that may not be applicable to each dog. By doing so, owners of well-trained gentle dogs are not punished by a breed ban, while dangerous dogs of all breeds are regulated and may have their day in court to be proven dangerous." In conclusion, I just want to remind everyone, on behalf of the Poplar Bluff Bully Alliance, our mission is to save the human canine bond between the bully breeds and their loving pet owners. We rely on facts, and that is what we have given you here tonight. We all want a safe and humane community, one that includes protecting citizens from dangerous dogs regardless of the breed, but also one that doesn't punish good responsible pet owners that went through, to every extent, to ensure that their dog cannot and will not harm anyone. City officials should protect people and pets by passing and enforcing laws that emphasize public safety, personal responsibility, and individual accountability. When it comes to dangerous dogs, the focus should be on reckless or negligent owners, not the breed of the dog. The simple truth, what we stress more than anything, is that breed is not a factor in bites, bad owners lead to bad dogs, and that puts citizens at risk. I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kelly DeFord, and I currently reside at 138 Hampton Court here in Poplar Bluff. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm going to speak from my own experience with a pit bull. In February 2001, a puppy was dropped off at my driveway. He was desperately trying to get back into the truck that had dropped him off. It was cold, it was raining. I went out and brought this puppy in, but I had no clue what kind of dog he was. He was maybe a couple of months old. And I started my research and found that he was an American bulldog. Over the next couple of weeks while housebreaking him, I realized that he was deaf, so I started teaching him hand signals, and over the next twelve and a half years, that's how we communicated. When I started hearing rumors about this breed ban in Poplar Bluff, I started looking for a home outside the city limits for myself and Jake. At that time, I owned two houses in Hampton Court, and I was more fortunate than a lot of people are. I was able to move out to the county. And others, other people who have a pit bull, they make them part of their family. Not all of us are drug dealers or dog biters. These are our family, and I was willing to do that, to keep my dog. Some people will choose to not make Poplar Bluff their home, and others will sneak around, and they'll have their pit bull, and they won't get veterinary care because they don't want to get in trouble. And then, maybe their dog gets away, and somebody finds out they have them, and you go get their dogs, and they lose a family member. I, as an American, I don't think that's right. I think I have the right to choose what kind of dog that I have. He never knew what kind of dog that he was. I raised him with my grandchildren. We never saw any aggression from him at all. So, they're trainable. They're good dogs. I chose to take my tax dollars out of the city limits. It's not a lot, but to me, it was the point. And I've been sent to the hospital by a couple of small dogs, but my Jake never, he never even showed his teeth at anybody. He was a good dog. So, you can't judge everybody who has these dogs just based on what you think about a certain breed of dog. The facts have been laid out for you. Thank you.
My name is Monzel Watkins. 1520 Wallace Street. Hello, my name is Monzel Watkins. I am six years old, and I live in Poplar Bluff. I am here because I want to tell you that I don't think it is fair to be told what kind of dog I can have at home. How can you say a dog is dangerous if you don't know the dog? How can you, I mean, way it looks, how can, how can you say a dog will hurt me because of the way it looks? How can you say a dog will bite because other dogs that look like it have? My mom tells me not to judge people by how they look. She says that the only thing that tells us if a person is good or bad is how they act. I think we should treat dogs the same way. This ban is terrible. Can't you see that I am a good boy? I get good grades, and I am a nice person, and I should be able to have my dog at home. Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing else on citizens' input under Section 7 proclamation, awards, and recognitions. It's a great honor for the City Council to recognize and introduce the new R1 School District Superintendent, Mr. Scott Dill, to the community. Would you come up to the? Would you come up to the?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. More than anything, I just wanted to put a face with a name, introduce myself. My wife and I have made our home here in Poplar Bluff, and our two daughters will be attending school here in the fall. The community has opened up with, welcomed us with open arms rather, and so far, everything has been very much to our liking, and we're very pleased to be here. Obviously, there's a lot going on with the school district right now, and it's an exciting time to be associated with the district. I know that the city and the school district have had a close relationship in years past, and I would hope that we can continue that and continue to do what is best for our community and for our schools. I'll be happy to answer any questions the council might have this evening, or... The big one, of course, is, is school going to start on time? The answer is yes. There may be some gentlemen in hard hats still around, but as of right now, we are on track. We are good to go.
Good. Nice to have you here, and we welcome you. It's a great community, and we're glad you chose us to come and keep our school going in the right way and make whatever changes are necessary for... You saw some of the little six-year-old boy come up.
Is he one of ours here in Poplar Bluff?
He's only in first grade.
Right on. That's a budding order right there. That young man's going to be president someday.
Yeah. That's what you got to work with here, so maybe hoping that'll make your job easier.
Well, and I want the council to know that in December, when this job came, came available, I was not looking for a job specifically. I had a good job in Houston, Missouri, in a good situation, and the community had been good to my family. Poplar Bluff interested me for a variety, variety of reasons, one of which was the, the construction going on. And just overall, the community feels like it is on the upswing, and it's a place that I wanted to be a part of, and I wanted to bring my family here as well. And so it's an honor to be here, and I look forward to the good work ahead, good but difficult work. There are not a lot of easy days in any of our professions, but it is well worth it, and we will do right by the kids, I promise you that.
That's good.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Moving on to the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the city council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may request to do so.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Workshop items for discussion. City council will review recommendations from the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding the issuance of Series 2016 Revenue Bonds for the purpose of improvements to the waterworks and sewer, sewage system.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This bond issuance deals with a million thirty-one thousand Series 2016 Waterworks and Sewerage System Revenue Bonds. A little bit of history, in 2008, the voters approved an eight-and-a-half million bond to make improvements to the waterwork system. Phase one included improvements to the water treatment plant, new distribution water lines, Vanover Road Water Tank, and the Bacon Park Water Tank. Phase two of the waterworks improvements included clear, excuse me, clearwell improvements, booster pump and distribution improvements, and a new river intake structure. And this final phase will include the installation of a UV disinfection system at the water plant and the construction of backup wells, and also distribution lines on the east side. This was discussed at an earlier advisory board meeting and would recommend the approval of this. Any questions?
There are no questions that entertain a motion, and second to move this to the voting session to be held August 1st.
Let's all move.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, the city council will review a recommendation from the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding an amendment to the fiscal year 2016 budget.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This deals with the replacement of a 1990 forklift, which has failed us and is out of commission. Forklift is used to unload chemicals at the water plant. Staff has taken three quotes, and the lowest quote was forklifts of Cape Inc. out of Cape Giroud, Missouri, for the amount of twenty-one thousand eight hundred dollars and thirty-nine cents. This was discussed also at an earlier advisory board and would recommend the budget change. Any questions?
No, the forklift that went out, we have was a 1990 forklift, right?
That's correct.
So it had its use. Probably longer than it should have been anyway. So it just ran shot, and Mr. Box said that this new one will work on gravel a lot better than the old one did, and that's where a majority of this forklift's going to be used.
No other questions that entertain a motion, and second to move this item to the voting session to be held tonight.
I make a motion to move it to the voting session?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the city council will review a proposed ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement between the city of Poplar Bluff and the Department of Economic Development for project number 2013-DS-07 relative to the flood buyout project. Mr. Avery?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you stated, this is a request to go and enter into a grant agreement with the Department of Economic Development. We will be funneling the money through the Community Development Block Grant Program. I would have brought this to you previously, but Community Development Block Grant, people wanted to have the administration agreement in place with Ozark Foothills Regional Planning Commission. So then we brought this, and you will note that it is on the voting item, a voting item for tonight's meeting as well. This is the Hillcrest Park area, proposed flood buyout, nine hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars approximately, and around thirty-two properties. We may not, we probably won't acquire all of those, but we feel that it's a very valid project to undertake, given recent flooding history in this area. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have about this project, though.
Has the people been contacted, or have you got results back from them?
We, we got letters back from thirty-three individual property owners. And until we can give them a dollar figure, we don't know how many of those are going to avail themselves of it. There was a lot of interest. Not everyone responded, but almost everyone did, so...
But they have been contacted?
They had a lot of, yes, they've had a lot of questions, and once we move forward, we're ready to get into the appraisal process, and hopefully that can happen next month, or begin next month.
And the figure you gave was nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, is that what you said?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because our figure here says nine hundred and ten, so...
It does. That's what I was telling you.
And I showed twenty houses, and you're saying thirty-two, based on...
Well, we, we sent out thirty because we know we won't acquire them.
Okay.
And the first, what we do, Community Development Agency does not do a lot of flood buyouts, so we've done flood buyouts in the past through different funding agencies, so we're trying to tailor this to their needs and their problems. But we have hopes that we can get around twenty-five properties, really, is what our expectation is. I believe the remainder of that amount probably goes for administration, Pam.
It probably does.
Yes.
But the grant itself, because it had an end, kind of, ten thousand five, and then the grant was nine ten.
Yes. Any other questions? Thank you.
Nothing else that entertain a motion, and a second to move this to the voting session to be held tonight.
I make a motion, we move this to the voting session tonight?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the city council will review a request from the Planning and Zoning Commission for a conditional use permit to operate a drive-through window for the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages in a C2 general commercial district for property located at 2586 Northwestwood Boulevard. The applicant is Aspen Midwest Properties, 2586 Northwestwood Boulevard, Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, pardon me. Aspen Midwest Properties are the owners of this, care of Matthew and Aaron Dodd. They are presently the owners and operators of the bread company in Northwestwood in Mansion Mall. They have bought the former Commerce Bank building at Eugene Boulevard and 67 North, currently remodeling it. I don't know, they don't have an opening date at this point, but they do have a contractor working there. To operate a drive-through window for the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages in the city of Poplar Bluff is a conditional use request and must be granted to the business owners, operators of the business. Surrounding land use is C2 general commercial. At this point, the building is a commercial building, but it is vacant. Surrounding land use to the north, south, east, and west is all C2 general commercial. It, it is accessed from Northwestwood onto Eugene Boulevard. Planning and zoning reviewed this, reviewed their traffic flow plan for their drive-through window, and there were no issues that, you know, they won't be obstructing any traffic on the highway or on Eugene Boulevard. The proposed drive-through route will be on the south side, begin on the south side of the building, go around the east and to the north side of the building, which is where the drive-through window would be. The applicant can provide sufficient traffic stacking on site. The planning commission and the planning department recommends approval of this conditional use permit with the following stipulations. One, that no alcoholic beverages are to be sold through the drive-through window. And two, that the conditional use permit go to the business owner. If ownership changes, the new owner would have to apply for a conditional use permit to continue with the drive-through window. Any questions from me?
There's no questions that entertain a motion, and a second to move this to the voting session to be held August 1st.
Make a motion, entertain a motion, we move this to the voting session on August 1st, excuse me.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, the city council will review a request from the Planning and Zoning Commission for a conditional use permit to operate a drive-through window for the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages in a C2 general commercial district for property located at 1337 Northwestwood Boulevard. The applicant is MMLS Properties LLC, 624 Northwestwood Boulevard, Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. MMLS Properties LLC, care of Jim Bailey, is the applicant. And Mr. Bailey is the owner of the property which this rest, which this building would be constructed on. It's a thirty-seven hundred and fifty-square-foot building, two thousand square feet of which would be the restaurant, and the other one would be a retail space. This sits adjacent to Westwood between Swafford's Amoco and the Goodwill, Mers Goodwill. It is vacant land at this time. Surrounding land use is C2 general commercial in all directions, and public utilities are available to the site. It is accessed from Northwestwood. All other drives and entry points outside of the Westwood right-of-way will be private, will be owned by Mr. Bailey. Police and fire protection is available, with Fire Station Number Two being the first responder. And again, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a drive-through window in order to sell food and non-alcoholic beverages. The proposed drive-through route will be, begin on the south side of the building, continue around to the north side, which is where the drive-through window would be. And again, the applicant can provide adequate traffic stacking on site, not interfering with any public roadways and right-of-ways. On this one, the owner has not announced what the restaurant will be, even though he has been asked at the Planning and Zoning Commission. He deferred to the, his future tenant, allowing him to make the announcement, and I can understand that. Again, Planning and Zoning Commission and the Planning Department do recommend approval with the following stipulations, and they're kind of familiar, they're kind of like the last ones I read out. No alcoholic beverages can be sold through the drive-through window. And number two, the conditional use permit would go with the business owner, and if ownership changes, the new owner would have to apply for a conditional use permit to continue with the drive-through window. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
No questions that entertain a motion, and a second to move this item to the voting session to be held August 1st.
Make a motion to move this to the voting session on August 1st?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, the city council will review a lease agreement between the city of Poplar Bluff and Southern Bank for property located at Vine and Fifth Streets.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, council had asked me to look into possible locations to move the city hall employees out of the building. Some of you had concerns over health issues and, of course, water issues and, I guess, varmit issues. I talked to Southern Bank about the building located behind the Kennedy Maytag, the building located on Vine Street. They're asking for three thousand dollars a month. It would be a one-year lease agreement. After the one year's up, if we would still need to be in the building, they would do a month-to-month lease. If we would decide to purchase the building for any reason, they would apply twelve months of the lease to the purchase, which is thirty-six thousand dollars. That's what, the amount they came up with. City attorney drew up a lease agreement, which you all have a copy of, and open it up for any questions or comments.
I didn't see any kind of deposit that's going to be required, is there not one?
There's a provision in the proposed lease for an amount that has not been yet negotiated as to an amount, or most likely, I think we're hopeful that they'll waive the deposit.
And I think, as all of you know, this would take care of the city clerk's office, city manager's office, the planning department, and the finance department. Would not take care of municipal court. That's a little bit harder area to find for court. Talked to most of the employees up here the last few days, it's kind of mixed emotions, whether some of them want to move or not. Some of them are concerned about the health issues, and some of them are concerned about water issues. You know, municipal court, I'm still trying to find a different location for them, but have not been able to find that yet and hope to soon.
Do we have any idea what the cost to move there, as far as telephone, all of that?
Don't, I don't have that cost. I will have that before the next meeting. Our IT person's actually been on vacation the last two weeks, and he'll be back tomorrow. As far as moving, fiscal moving, we would use the street department probably for that.
They haven't vacated that building very long, so it should be in pretty good order, isn't it?
Yes, it is, and we went through it probably four or five weeks ago, and it's in good shape. Carpet needs cleaned. They've actually got some furniture in it. They said we could use some nice, a lot of the desks are nicer than what we have, so they've agreed to leave that in there.
I think it would be a great improvement for our employees, our city employees, and also it would keep it located downtown, which is a concern of many of the citizens, keeping it downtown. It would be easy accessible, and, I mean, I think it would be a temporary fix for us.
I make a motion to move this to the voting item on August 1st?
Second.
Motion second, move item F to the voting session August 1st, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item AA is tabled, is that correct? On the action-required items?
Yes.
We'll need a motion.
We'll need a mo, we're working with the state on some issues on that ordinance, so...
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we table Bill Number 7928.
Second.
Motion second to table item 7928. Need a roll call? Or do you want to?
Let's do a roll call.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman McBay?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Parton Crocker?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris?
Yes.
Thank you. Bill Number 7928 is tabled. Bill Number 7929, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement between the city of Poplar Bluff and Missouri Department of Economic Development for project number 2013-DS-07 relative to flood buyout project.
Move for first reading and caption only?
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Rick?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Poplar Bluff to execute an agreement between the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, and the Missouri Department of Economic Development for project number 2013-...
for project number 2013-DS-07 relative to the flood buyout project.
Make a motion for second reading, bill number 7929, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Poplar Bluff to execute an agreement between the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, and the Missouri Department of Economic Development for project number 2013-DS-07 relative to the flood buyout project.
Move to adopt 7929.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox?
Yes.
Councilwoman McBay?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGarris?
Yes.
Thank you, bill number 7929 is adopted. Bill number 7930, the city council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid for making an amendment to the Municipal Utilities 2016 fiscal year budget.
Move for first reading of 7930, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second, first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance amending the 2016 FY budget of the Poplar Bluff Municipal Utilities Department and accepting a bid for the purchase of a forklift.
Move for second reading, bill number 7930, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance amending the 2016 fiscal year budget of the Poplar Bluff Municipal Utilities Department and accepting a bid for the purchase of a forklift.
Move for adoption of 7930.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox?
Yes.
Councilwoman McBay?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGarris?
Yes.
Thank you, bill number 7930 is adopted. Resolution number 1847, the city council will take action on a resolution issuing support to Housing Plus LLC doing business at Poplar Bluff Senior Villas for low-income housing tax credits to construct thirty-six one- and two-bedroom apartments.
Move for the reading of resolution number 1847, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the reading of resolution 1847, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
A resolution of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, issuing support for low-income housing tax credits to construct thirty-six one- and two-bedroom apartments on Oak Grove Road in Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion second for adoption of resolution 1847. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox?
Yes.
Councilwoman McBay?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGarris?
Yes.
Okay, I've been informed there's no need for a closed session of the city council. The city manager's report?
I just wanted to give you an update on the intersection of Canal Boulevard and Maude Street. I've talked to Mo Dot. Well, first of all, the, we've, the city has erected a dangerous intersection sign on Maude Street as you approached the intersection, did that last week. I did request Mo Dot to look into that intersection and they've come back saying that in engineering's opinion, there needs to be no signage. But if that's what the city wants, they'll be more than happy to put up an intersection sign coming both ways. So I'm assuming that's what we are gonna, or that's what I'm gonna recommend them do and ask them to do. Also, they have been, they've set up a speed sign. They're testing the speed through there right now. And as soon as they get that study back, they'll get with me on what their recommendations might be for the speed limit sign. That's where we're at on the intersection. And I know most of you remember, we had applied for a grant for a demolition of twenty-something houses months ago. And just wanted to let you know, we were not approved for that grant. We will be trying for it again next year, though, so. That's all I have.
Make a motion, adjourn.
Second.
Motion second for adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? For adjournment.